City Apartments' apartment building, they didn't pay my rent. I don't know why. They also had to write my name on the lease. Later, I followed their instructions. They wrote my name on the lease. They then paid me. But before, the lease was written by my company. They wrote my name and paid the rent. I don't know why. Because of that, they didn't pay my rent. It made me very frustrated. After I paid the rent, after about three months, City Apartments again asked me not to write the apartment's name. They wrote it to another company. So I continued. But I think City Apartments treated me like an elderly person. It made me very frustrated. I just suffered. I suffered.
Hold on, wait just a minute. Rose, can you remember all this?
Yeah.
All right, all right.
My notes.
Okay, okay.
I don't remember. Finally, they wrote a letter to ask us to go to City Apartments. But the tenant's contractor asked me if I wanted to go there.
Ms. Chung, if you can just let him know that's about two minutes. And so you need to...
They asked me to pay 9,000 dollars. I don't know why. I didn't want to pay 5,000 dollars for an apartment. But...
He would thank you for the opportunity to come here to speak. This is King Sang. He lives at 325 Hyde Street. And City Apartments bought over the unit in 2007. As he understands it, his and his wife's names were on the lease. And the first time he gave the check, they returned it and requested that his wife's name be on the check, that she writes the check to them. And he's also confused too because originally, they wrote the check out to City Apartments and then later on to Trophy Properties. Shortly after, he was called to a meeting and he was offered $9,000 to leave. Him and his wife lived there and three teenager children. So he thought that it was unfair because I think the maximum is $14,500. And so he thinks that because he's elderly, they want to take advantage of him.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Chung. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good afternoon, supervisors.
Good afternoon.
My name is Li Baopeng and my husband is Ushun Law. My husband is 61 years old. And my son, Reginald. Three people is American citizen. My son has a developmental disability. We are taking care of him. My family lived disability 15 years. I speak one Chinese. In 1993, I lived in this City Apartments apartment. I lived in 507 B. In 1995, we moved to 601B. I lived there for 15 years. Later, the other owner found out that 601B was rented illegally. So we agreed to negotiate a legal solution to satisfy our requirements. So we agreed to move to 601-310. Originally, the rental payment was $608.50. But in 2006, when City Apartments bought this apartment, they forced us to move out within three days. Then, the judge sued us and sued us. Then, I contacted the Asian Law Caucus to handle this case. During this process, they asked us to move out. But we refused to move out. We must still fight for our fairness. Because I have been living legally. Now, I have been in this case for two years. It hasn't been settled. So I refused to move out. Our request was to cancel the case. Move to 310 B. But 310 B, the City Apartments rented it to other tenants. Because they rented 9,000 dollars. They rented 608.50 dollars. They are violating the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So she's lived at... The family has lived at 1020 Post Street since 1993. In 1995, they moved from room 507 to 601B. The original owner said that 601B was not up to code and they offered to move her to room 301. By that time, a new owner came in and owned that property for a half year. And then City Apartments came in. They did not follow up with allowing her to move into room 301. And they, in fact, gave her a three-day notice. And she didn't move. And she got Asian Law Caucus to represent them. And then, the case is still pending and it's been two and a half years. She currently pays $680.83. And the unit in room 301, the one in which they were supposed to move to, is rented for over $1,000.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Josua Duárez. I'm a staffer at Pride at Work and a volunteer with the City Stop Coalition. I just want to touch base on the pattern of construction and buildings being used as a method of prolonged harassment. In the past year, doing tenant outreach door-to-door, I have witnessed loud, messy, and obtrusive construction in these apartment buildings. There are cases of water shut-offs without notice or that they exceed their time limit. Issues such as moving mailbox locations, elevator shut-off for days, construction at late evening hours, and exceeding their permit usage have all contributed to frustrated tenants being bought out or moving out due to the inhabitable conditions that City Apartment methods have been put upon these tenants. If you guys look at pages 25 to 35 in your packets, there's photos and images of various buildings we have gone into and the conditions we found them in. It is something that I acknowledge. It is something that the tenants acknowledge. And I think it's something that City Apartments needs to acknowledge. Their mission to sweep out rent-controlled units in a systematic way, I think, is creating an institutional problem. And we need a process that can intervene on them, not just because of our complaints. It is illegal and their cumulative displacement needs to stop. And they need to be held accountable. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Duárez. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Thanks for taking this time. My name is Josela Stella-Cruz and I'm here as a renter, as a City Stop volunteer during door-to-door outreach since early last year, and as a tenant organizer at the Tenderloin Housing Clinic. I became familiar with the City Apartment scandal when I began volunteering for Pride at Work. After talking to tenants from a building in the Mission and buildings in the Tenderloin, a few things became clear to me. One is that City Apartments intentionally uses a variety of tactics that have the effect of intimidating and coercing particular tenants to move out or be evicted. Two, and this is what I think is really important to think about, is that City Apartments specifically targets non-English speakers, long-term residents, and the elderly slash differently abled. As an organizer, our office is open daily for tenants who know about us to drop in with their issues. This includes City Apartment tenants. I was not surprised, but still dismayed, to find that the tenants that I talked to were all non-English speakers and/or elderly slash differently abled. Their experiences were also similar to those I had heard from other volunteers and tenants that I had spoken to personally. One of the drop-ins was a tenant from 642 Jones who came on behalf of another elderly tenant who was being targeted by City Apartment officials for her hoarding and cluttering problem. Hoarding and cluttering is a mental health issue that only the worst of landlords would exploit to justify nuisance eviction. City Apartments in this case was not any better. The City Apartment scandal is unfortunately not isolated to SF. Just last week, The New York Times reported on New York City landlords whose financial strategies rely on creating a high turnover of rent-controlled units through harassment and intimidation of their low-income and vulnerable tenants. Much like what City Apartments is doing here. As supervisors of a city that is known for being a beacon of progress for this country, it is imperative that you take action to hold City Apartments accountable and that the city attorney prioritizes the lawsuit. Because otherwise, you are, in effect, rubber-stamping the displacement of poor people and the people who are vulnerable for the benefit of City Apartments' profit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stella-Cruz. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ken Irvine. I live at 1330 Bush Street at the corner of Larkin. City Apartments bought my building in April of 2005. I have been there almost 30 years. And actually, I have some pictures I kind of wish they'd look at. I have called them twice asking about the interest check on my deposit. All the other building owners, managers, once a year, I got a check for the deposit. And they've given me the runaround twice. First thing they did when they bought the building was remove the bench from the lobby. There was a lot of elderly people there. And they needed it while waiting on a taxi. And many were sitting there waiting on the mail. People kind of congregated there. And I don't think they wanted that to happen at all. The next thing they did, they turned off the intercom for about three months. We could not get a delivery. We could not let a friend in. We could not let UPS in. We could not let a repairman in. We could do nothing for about three months. They left that off. The water was turned off every seven to 10 days. They'd put a sign up. Hot water was turned down to lukewarm. And I had to let it run sometime for quite a while to get it good and warm. I had to go buy a space heater for heat because they had the heat down so much.
If you could wrap up, Mr. Irvine.
They were able to remove most tenants with the buyout. I was the only person left on my floor out of 14 units on that one floor.
Thank you, Mr. Irvine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Abdul Muhammad Hussain.
And sir, we'll return those photos. You've just come over here. Mr. Irvine? We just want to return those photos.
Mr. Hussain, William Keely, Thomas Finn, Harry Wong, Emma Gerald. If you heard your name called, you can come up to speak. Abdul Hussain, William Keely, Thomas Finn, Harry Wong, Emma Gerald. In any order, come on up. If you heard your name called, you can come on up, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Harry Wong. City Apartments acquired my building in July of '07. At the time, I received a June notice from the previous owner of a rent increase to take place in August. The rent increase went amount to $676,000,000, commencing in August. Then, City Apartments then gave me an October notice of an additional rent increase to take place in December, which would be $1,550,000. I had been in that building for 25 years. I'm a disabled veteran, living on a pension. On October 5th, after I received the second rent increase, I received a notice from PG&E that I would have to put PG&E in my name. Whereas with my original lease, the landlord had paid all my PG&E. I called City Apartments and was directed to Ed Singer of the Lemby Group. I told him about this problem. And then, I also told him about my history in the building and that I was a disabled veteran. Mr. Lemby said that if I wrote him a letter, he would direct it to the owners and maybe he could do something about the second rent increase if I would include all the information that I told him. So without embellishing, I mentioned that I was wounded on Thanksgiving of 1966, shot, and also received head injuries with an explosion. As a result, I have PTSD and tinnitus. And the second rent increase was increasing my stress levels at a very, very intense level at that time. I wrote the letter to Mr. Singer and I received no response. So I said to myself, I had to give them a 30-day notice to not be in breach. At the time, I vacated the building, which was November 30th. It was a 24-unit building. There were five other people. There were five other people, five other units who had also vacated on that specific date out of the 24-unit building. This is in November, four months after they had taken over the building.
Thank you.
And then, where did you end up?
My present residence is now at A38 Hyde, which is not part of the City Apartments Consortium.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Next speaker, please. If you heard your name, William Keely, Thomas Finn, Emma Gerald, Darren Dawson, Gwen Sobolowsky, Karen Winter, Debbie Nunez, Edie Mary Gibson.
Hello, my name is Emma Gerald and I'm a volunteer with the City Stop Campaign. And I as well went out and did door-knocking to talk to tenants and to educate them about their rights. And I would like to talk about buyouts. The specific building that I went to was a four-unit building. It was in Pacific Heights. All of the tenants had been offered buyouts. And two of the tenants had taken buyouts. One tenant was being specifically directed by the landlord to convince the other tenant, who had been there for 20 years under rent control, to accept the buyout. Now luckily, she knew her rights. She was elderly. And she knew that no matter how much money that they would give her, it wouldn't compensate for the high rental market now in San Francisco. But this is a story that we've seen over and over again. And I think it's important to note that many times, the buyout offers are between $5,000 or $8,000. And it's usually less if the person doesn't speak English as their first language or if it appears that they want to leave right away. So we had a City Stop campaign hosted a tenant meeting a little over a month ago. And about 80 tenants showed up. And of those people that showed up, almost 100% of the people have received buyouts. So this is something that's very, very common. This is a way that City Apartments uses to get around rent control, to systematically raise the rents in our city. And we really, really need to pay attention to this. Because they, in the past couple of years, they've been buying more and more buildings. And I really think it's worth to investigate antitrust laws that have been broken as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gerald. Next speaker, please.
John O'Brien. I live at 516 Ellis.
So Brian, can you grab the microphone?
No.
Yes, thanks.
How about that? Whoops. Okay. I live at 516 Ellis. And City Apartments, quite honestly, has been very good to us. They bought the building I used to live in in May 1st of last year. And my husband was the resident manager. And they gave us two months to move. And he had had a stroke. And they gave us movers. They gave us an apartment we could afford. They were really, quite honestly, they were very good with us, you know? So I think they were just great. I don't know what else to say. They were... We have a rent we can afford and a place we want to live. And it's comparable to where we were. And again, he had a stroke and was the resident manager. They didn't have to do that. They really, they helped us tremendously. And they gave us movers and two months to move. So I just want to say on their behalf, they were really good for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Gwen Sobolowsky. I live at 2400 Van Ness. I've lived there 29 years. City Apartments bought my building in May of 2007. And within two weeks, gave me my first buyout offer. When I didn't accept that in August, I started receiving some very odd harassing phone calls. And at first, I thought they were wrong numbers because they were so abusive. And then I started to see a pattern that every time I spoke to my building manager, I would get this harassing call. And after a while, I realized that the person would call and say, "Do not speak to us. Do not speak to my family. Do not ever speak to us when you see us." And I couldn't figure out who they were talking about. Well, they were talking about the building manager. And every time I spoke to him, I would get a harassing phone call. I called City Apartments and spoke to a woman there. And she said to document all of the phone calls. So I started to do that. And then one day, I received three phone calls in one day. And they were so abusive, telling me that they hated me. They wished I were dead, calling me abusive names. So I called the police. And the police came and listened to the messages on my voicemail and went up and spoke to the manager's girlfriend, who was the person who had been making the calls. She admitted to making the calls to me. They asked her if she remembered what she said. And she said, "No, but I don't think it was very nice," to put it mildly. So they asked her to quit calling me, which she did. Then in March of this year, the building manager and his girlfriend live above me. And they have started dropping, what I think are free weights on the ceiling, scraping their dining room table across the floor, banging their chairs on the floor, and making extreme noises to the point it's very hard to have any kind of a peaceful existence in my apartment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sobolowsky. Next speaker, please.
I apologize. I know I'm going to be just a tad over two minutes, but I'll read fast. What we remember, there are a lot of other people downstairs and... Thank you. My name is Debbie Nunez. Since 1989, we have lived in a two-bedroom apartment in Lower Nob Hill. This is my family. I'm here today because of them and also to represent to you the impact City Apartments has made to my family. Until I attended a City Stop meeting, I was too intimidated to speak now, speak out. Now I feel that I can share the deep frustration that has occurred as a result. They purchased our building in approximately 2000. My daughter was four years old. Following this, we were called in to meet with their tenant liaison. No reason provided. In good faith effort, we went. I quickly realized that the intent was to find out what they could find out about us in order to get rid of us. We were also asked very personal questions about our neighbors. We were also offered a relocation plan, which I declined politely. We have ideal jobs close to home, important to me because of my young daughter. From that point forward, whatever sense of home I had was lost. This is my tenant file, containing documents and complaint letters, construction each time they bought out a tenant, constant garbage, debris, construction materials, dust all over, with total disregard for the safety of the tenants, especially the three young children in the building, one my daughter. What isn't in this file is perhaps more compelling. Boiler's broken down for weeks at a time due to construction. No heat. Not being able to bathe my daughter in more than lukewarm water. I felt like such a poor provider. Or how they showed up in the middle of the day to videotape our apartment, for what I now realize was false pretense. More an attempt to find any reason they could to evict us. My privacy breached. Or three forms mailed to us last year, vaguely worded, requesting social security numbers. Why would City Apartments need my daughter's social security number? About 14 original tenants remain out of 34. And we have managed to hold on. But this did exact a price. My sense of home, what my husband and I work hard for, is compromised. I'm forced to be hyper-vigilant and distrustful. This is not simply about a bad landlord. This is about a well-oiled machine, one whose pervasive business practices have by design negatively impacted my family. We are productive and responsible citizens. On behalf of my family, please consider my story. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nunez. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Darren Dawson and I've lived at 2 Guerrero Street for 15 years. City Apartments bought the building 10 years ago. My former landlord and I got along really well. In fact, in 1998... I'm sorry, yeah, 1998, I was offered a HOPOR lease, which is a housing opportunities for persons with AIDS lease. I called my former owner of the building and I said, "Look what I've got." And I said, "What should I do?" He said, "I'd love to have you in my building with a HOPOR lease." And I could basically live the rest of my life, however long that may be, with a HOPOR lease in his building. Unfortunately, he sold that building to City Apartments. The problem started as soon as they bought the building. They refused to accept my HOPOR lease upon purchase. What the former owner told me was that they'd actually negotiated the price of the building down based upon that HOPOR lease. And then at the same time, they said they wanted me out. Three months, my lease was an abatement. I was paying my portion. The housing authority said, "No, because we haven't gotten the title. They're not signing the documents. They're refusing to accept the lease." But they bought the lease. That was resolved by actions from the AIDS Legal Referral Panel, from the Housing Authority, and from Catholic Charities as a case manager. The harassment has continued since then. I've gotten repeated buyout offers and they're harassing. Mr. Marsh called four years ago, repeatedly telling me I should move out of the state. Alfred Ramirez called, said, "I had overstayed my time in the building and I need to be gone." Diana, whatever her last name was, she would never reveal it, said basically the same thing. "You need to leave our building." Why? I'm a model tenant. My apartment is in perfect shape. Every year, I get inspected by the Housing Authority. I asked the inspector, "Give me a letter grade on my apartment." A-plus. Nothing wrong with it. Rent paid perfectly. Excellent tenant. Cooperative, considerate, get along with all the other tenants. What's my crime? I'm below market rent. That's my crime. And that's not a crime. They've tried to do a capital improvement on my apartment. Beautiful apartment, perfect shape. Evict me for six months. The former resident manager said, "Don't take it. You'll never get back in." This is why City Apartments needs to be stopped.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dawson.
Did you take it?
No, no.
Karen Winter, Edie Gibson, Keith Perry, Tara Condon, Tetris Scott. If you've heard your name, come on up to the podium to speak. Alan Grant.
Chairman, supervisors, good afternoon. Thanks for hearing us. My name's Keith Perry. I live at 50 Laguna Street. Today, I just want to bring your attention just one... Can you hear me? Just one of the many issues that have arisen since City Apartments bought 50 Laguna Street a year ago. I live in the unit directly over the front door. And I've been asking City Apartments to repair the front door of the building that their workmen damaged since September 21st of last year. The door now either slams shut very forcefully or doesn't shut at all, which is a security issue. On April 30th of this year, after their workmen once again failed to restore the door to its former function, I began to make additional documentation with a video camera. A week ago Saturday, the building's manager, Joe Vargo, happened to enter the building while I was videoing the door slam. This is at 2:00 in the morning. It was keeping me awake. You know, the whole apartment shakes and the sound is like a small earthquake all night long. So that was Saturday, a week ago Saturday. Last Monday, I was invited by City Apartments Department Last Monday, I was invited by City Apartments Department of Client Relations and Legal Affairs to a meeting ostensibly to discuss my letters about the door, and this is at 299 Market Street. If I'd gone in alone, I would have found myself outnumbered three to one, but luckily, my friend Peter Argersinger-Freeze was able to accompany me. And he sat quietly for most of the time. Dan Moliere led the meeting. One of their attorneys was there. And the third person, one of Moliere's first statements was that he is a former police officer with the Los Angeles Police Department. Not making this up. Instead of addressing the issues I raised in my letters, he informed me he has instructed Joe Vargo to call the police the next time I slammed the door, to have me cited for disturbing the peace. I said clearly that I was documenting the door slam that was keeping me awake. And when my friend Peter calmly stepped into my defense, Moliere lost any semblance of reason and began angrily shouting at us while his associates silently looked on. When I quietly reminded him that it was a business meeting and that his... May I finish this sentence?
Please do.
That it was a business meeting and that his anger should be left outside, he abruptly ended the meeting. It had lasted all of eight minutes, which so basically my time was wasted. I am now concerned about further retaliation, bullying, lies, and being driven from my apartment, as are my neighbors, one of whom is severely disabled and afraid to be mentioned in this room, as he's virtually indefensible. He can't defend himself.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The story, next speaker, please.
I am Eddie, maybe Gibson, but I'm not here for this hearing.
Okay.
And I'm here for the resounding.
All right. Well, we'll get to that later in the agenda, I imagine, ma'am. So that'd be later on. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Tara Condon, and I'm here on behalf of City Apartments. In fact, I'm one of the attorneys for City Apartments, and I work in the in-house legal department along with three other attorneys and a paralegal. And I want to assure you that we're working very hard to address every single one of the tenants' concerns that have been aired here today. I've taken notes. We will investigate and respond in writing where that's appropriate. But I also want to point out a few things that we think are important for you to remember as you listen to everyone today. We've made massive improvements to buildings that increase the revenue to the city. They're reassessed, the values are higher, and it increases the money that the city receives. We've made significant charitable donations to organizations relating to housing. In addition, we were voted the best management company by the San Francisco Apartment Association. In addition, we were awarded the Best Repositioned Property Award for 1008 Larkin. We are a member of the Hoarders and Clutterers Task Force. You heard someone speak earlier today about hoarding and cluttering, and that that's a mental illness. We don't disagree with that. We think it's an important issue to take up, but it also can pose a health hazard for the other tenants around those individuals afflicted with that particular disorder. So we're involved in the task force. We also have regular contact with Adult Protective Services to seek assistance for elderly tenants. We try to work with them. Also, I would note that our buyout agreements can be canceled at will. This is not a form of coercion. It's right there in the document. Also, I want to say that though the numbers that have come before you so far this afternoon largely are on the side of the tenants complaining about City Apartments, we also have a large number of people like Ms. O'Brien, who will come forward and tell you that we've worked with them. People who are in arrears and they're renting significant amounts of money. We're a business, but we still try to work with them. We try to make sure that they can stay in their apartments. So we would like to respond in writing to a lot of the matters that have been raised today, and we will do so and hope that you'll consider it with the same care and attention that you've considered everyone's comments today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Sarah Lazar. I am a San Francisco renter and a volunteer with the Queer Youth Organizing Project. Many of the people you see here today supporting City Apartments are either employees on the payroll of City Apartments or are being compensated by City Apartments for speaking. Before this hearing, some people came up to us, they were wearing "I Support City Apartments" t-shirts, asking us, "Is this where we go for compensation?" I urge you to see through City Apartment Management's veneer. They do not have the community support or tenant's support, no matter how many people they pay to speak at this hearing. I also want to share our experience... I also want to share our experience with one building we visited across the street from where we sit today. 512 Van Ness is a 48-unit apartment building. We first visited the building in September of last year, a few months after it had been purchased by City Apartments. Residents told us that in six short weeks, City Apartments had gotten all but nine of the tenants to move out. The whole building was dusty, and all of the vacant units were being remodeled. Some tenants were offered as much as $23,000 to move. When we went back to the building a couple of weeks ago, there were only six long-term tenants left. These tenants had all been offered buyouts but had turned them down. One elderly tenant faces an uncertain future if she is not able to stay in the building. City Apartments' harassment of tenants is not only invasive and wrong, it's creative. City Apartments entered the apartment of one of the remaining tenants illegally and painted her kitchen without telling her beforehand. They have turned all of the vacated apartments into corporate suites. Now only wealthy corporate employees from out of town live at 512 Van Ness. And the last thing I want to say is that I am a volunteer with the Queer Youth Organizing Project, and no one is paying me to speak today.
If we could try and limit the applause, then we can move through public comment more efficiently. Thank you for your consideration of that. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sarah Garmisa, and I'm a volunteer with Pride at Work and the Queer Youth Organizing Project, too. I'm also a renter in the Hayes Valley and Lower Hay area, and thank you for being here this afternoon. Though I am not a City Apartments tenant, I'm a concerned San Francisco renter. I hope to explain why the city of San Francisco should prioritize this case against City Apartments. As others have already testified in more detail, their hegemonic business tactics inflate the housing market and will soon make renting in my neighborhood an impossibility. City Apartments owns many of the apartment buildings in my area and will probably soon buy the rest. I currently share a non-rent-controlled three-bedroom apartment with four other women, as it is the only way we are able to afford housing near our jobs. Though we work full-time, all of us, fitting five people into a three-bedroom apartment is all we can manage. We have a good relationship with our current landlord, but she has made it clear to us on several occasions that she may raise the rent at will. We live in constant fear that the effect of the overpriced City Apartments' units near us will move her to raise our rent to match their pricing. Though our rent is high, and we have sacrificed to make it work, we are unable to afford a single unit that City Apartments lists in the several neighborhoods that surround us. If our landlord decides to raise our rent, we will not be able to afford to live in our neighborhood. We may not even be able to afford to live in the city. For us, this is a reality every day. When I feel the stress of this, I check the Craigslist postings and compare apartments to some that are like ours. More and more of the available units are owned by City Apartments, and less and less of them we can afford. I worry that I will not be able to live in San Francisco if she raises our rent. City Apartments has a strategy that artificially raises the cost of living in a neighborhood by monopolizing a localized housing market. As others have already testified, they purchased several buildings in an area and coerced rent-controlled tenants out of the building with illegal and immoral tactics. They then take the units and bump up the prices, changing the pricing matrix of an entire neighborhood to push out working folks and other vulnerable people. The Hayes Valley/Lower Hay area is on the brink of this change. Many of my coworkers have left the city because it is no longer possible for them to live here. I hope that does not happen to me. I hope that San Francisco, the city where I live, work, play, and pay taxes, will do whatever it can to investigate this company and all its subsidiaries. Please hold this company accountable and keep San Francisco livable for working people. I hope that the city attorney will prioritize the case against City Apartments by not settling out of court, investigating their violation of antitrust laws, and bringing them to justice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let me read these cards again. If folks hear your name, come on into the committee room to speak. Karen Winter, Patrice Scott, Alan Grant, Jose Acosta, Fran Harris, Lupe Areola, Kristi Collins.
Yeah, my name is Patrice Scott. I'm at 1330 Bush, apartment 90. City Search bought the unit that I was living in in May of '06. For me, the relocation package made sense. So I was able to pay off some debt, make some investments, and then move into the unit that they helped me move into. Once I moved into the new unit at 1330 Bush, I was unemployed for about three months. So as the attorney mentioned, I accrued some backup rent, in which they helped me work through that, and now I'm caught up and I'm paying rent on time. I had one point person, they knew my situation. I went through them, and it was a good experience for me. I'm not getting paid to be here. I'm here free will. And during this stipulation agreement that I had to get caught up on my rent, I had a death in the family. These stipulation agreements are you pay X amount this week, X amount that week. And once this death occurred in my family, I contacted City Apartments, my attorney, Lisa Padilla, and she worked with me. She understood, there was no back and forth. I told her the circumstance, and we were able to get back on track, and I was able to attend this funeral. Basically, I read the paper, I'm up on the news, I know what everybody's saying about this situation. But from my own standpoint, I've had a good experience with City Search. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our City Apartments.
Again, I'd like to ask you not to applaud. It takes more time, and we have a lot of people, so please do not applaud. We understand and we appreciate your enthusiasm. Next.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Alan Grant. I'm a resident at 861 Center Street, my City Apartments. I've lived there for about three years. Last year, when the real estate market started to crumble, I lost my position and ran into some serious financial difficulties. City Apartments and the legal department there has been nothing but respectful, compassionate, kind, and did everything in their power to work with me, to take care of my financial problems with them, and allow me to stay in my apartment and progress further so I was able to be calm, be in my home, found a great new position. And because of their help and concern and compassion, my life was made so much easier. I'm sorry these other people have had problems. I have not. And I applaud all of their help and all of their compassion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, supervisors. And, you know, my name is Guadalupe Areola with St. Peters Housing Committee. I've been here plenty of times to talk about different issues. First of all, I thank you all for having us here today, and Supervisor Daly for asking for this hearing. And first, I want to address something that's really important that somebody else addressed before, which is, how many tenants here that are here support City Apartments were paid to be here? Is anybody here willing to raise your hand? Who was paid to be here? And there's people also in the other room, people downstairs, how many people were paid to be here? To me, it's a shame. It's not the tenants who'd be ashamed, because, you know, people, you know, we're in a hard economic times. It's City Apartments who should be ashamed for paying people, to defend them, to be here, when all the tenants, community organizations who are here today to oppose City Apartments are not being paid to be here. We are here because we feel that our tenant rights and our human rights as a tenant in San Francisco should be respected. At St. Peters Housing Committee, we have seen a lot of people who've come in from City Apartments, who were asked for their immigration information, their immigration status, which is illegal to do. People who were threatened with evictions because they moved in a spouse or a partner. And tenants whose rent checks were not cashed for months, and then were given a three-day notice. City Apartments needs to be stopped from increasing rents above market rates and from saying them higher than other landlords. Also, they need to be stopped from giving buyouts, proposing buyouts that are under what Proposition H is requiring landlords to do. There's a law that was passed in New York recently that imposes higher fines on landlords to harass tenants. This should be imposed here in San Francisco as well. Also, corporations are sued and they're fined for, and they're not allowed to have monopolies over certain sections of the economy here in San Francisco. City Apartments, by buying up all these properties in San Francisco, it has a monopoly on the rental market in San Francisco. Their logo is a monopoly for it, you know? So antitrust laws need to also be imposed on this company here in San Francisco as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Just read a bunch of speaker cards. Fran Harris, Kristi Collins, Susan Prentice, Sarah Lazar, Tim Durning, Rachel Messer. If you've heard your name, come on up to speak, if you haven't already done so.
Good afternoon. I'm a volunteer counselor at the San Francisco Tenants Union.
You can move that around here.
Okay. So I'll start again. Good afternoon. I'm a volunteer counselor at the San Francisco Tenants Union, and on nearly every one of my shifts, I have clients seeking advice for the inhumane and illegal business tactics of their landlord, City Apartments. Their concerns include severe habitability issues, harassment, wrongful evictions, false claims of late payment of rent, videotaping their apartment when they're entering. I have several clients that mention that, as well as buyout agreements, and much, much more. On a personal note, I was forced out of my apartment due to City Apartments' negligence and harassment. Please force City Apartments to stop their illegal and inhumane business tactics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Susan Prentice, and I'm a volunteer counselor at the San Francisco Tenants Union. I'm receiving no compensations for speaking. One of the issues that I've run into lately counseling is that under rent control, a tenant is allowed to replace roommates. And what's happening at City Apartments is that the tenant is told that they need to come down to the office and sign a new lease, and their rent will be raised, but they will be allowed to add the tenant. And this is also illegal under rent control. You do not have to sign a new lease that is materially different than your old lease. These are two really important parts of the rent control ordinance, and I just wanted to make those points. And thank you, supervisors, for having this hearing.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I am speaking on behalf of a City Apartments tenant that cannot make it today. I live at 601 O'Farrell Street Building for many years. What we are complaining about is the elevators. The doors are very heavy, and they don't have automatic stops. It is really hard for us when we are carrying heavy loads because the doors won't open. It is also hard for us who use walkers, canes, or wheelchairs. We complained, but we are not heard. Their reason is, if you are not happy in the building, then leave. That should not be the attitude of the landlord. I hope you can help us in any way you can. Thank you for all your kind assistance and care for us who are not very fortunate to have our own house.
Thank you very much. Let me read some more cards. Elizabeth Alexander, Yolanda, and Tyrion, Teresa and Tyrion, Antonio Knight.
Hi, my name is Tim Durning. I live at 1050 Post Street. That is in District 3, right across the street from District 6. I'm here representing, I'm the treasurer of the Harvey Milk LGBT Democratic Club, and I'm here representing that club, the largest political club in the Bay Area. City Apartments bought the building that I live in over a year ago. Many tenants have vacated. They were bought out. There is constant construction on the vacant units, including Saturdays and Sundays, starting at 8:30 a.m. The unit below me was under construction for three months before it was rented. That means the noise was basically constant. At least one neighbor has had an infestation of bedbugs. Another has reported to me mice. One gentleman on disability, on a fixed income, was bought out just very recently for approximately $20,000. He now has been relocated to another City Apartments unit at twice the rent. And his bathroom is now down the hall. Now, you all know that his income was approximately $750 per month. His rent is now approximately $900 per month. How long do you think that $20,000 is going to last? He will eventually run out of money, and what happens to him then? So I would ask that this committee, the city of San Francisco, do whatever it can in its power to stop this abuse of tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durning. Elizabeth Alexander, Yolanda, and Tyrion, Teresa and Tyrion, Antonio Knight, Leebau Pan, Diana Enriquez, Ted Hexler.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm actually here to talk about my personal experience, and I'm kind of taking a step outside the normal organizer position that I come in front of you, and I'm going to talk about what it was like for me when I was living at 1020 Post Street and City Apartments bought my building. First of all, I wanted to say that, you know, our manager stayed on, he's actually here today, and he's a wonderful person. He's a wonderful man. It wasn't him that was causing us all our problems. And so a lot of the people who are here today wearing t-shirts are just normal employees, and it's normal that people want to come and protect their job and that they're trying to defend themselves because they're good people. It's not, you know, the janitors, it's not, you know, those folks who cause us problems. It's the administration of City Apartments who's causing these tactics. In every building I've seen, and I've actually organized over 10 different City Apartments buildings, but again, I'm going to talk about my personal experience. When we were first, when it was first bought, in the morning, these big thugs, I've never even seen bigger people in my life, they must get like football players, dressed in big suits and with little things in their ears, went knocking on everyone's door and slamming leases in our faces, asking us to sign new contracts, giving us, you know, the two-inch-thick documents, asking us to sign right away, saying, "Sign to verify you got it," but it was really signing a new lease where they told you to sign. Most of us had, were pretty versed in our rights and had organized before. And so people were smart enough not to do it. But at six o'clock in the morning, people do a lot of things that they're not thinking clearly on when there's some slamming things in their face. The other is that the City Apartments really went after every immigrant in our building. People who had on their lease Joseph instead of Yosef, who had Elvis instead of a very long Czechoslovakian name, or had different names on their leases and then they had ID. All of the City Apartments went after every single one of them. And it was only because of the law office where I worked, Tendolene Housing Clinic, that we were able to get people, allow people to stay in the building. And that only happened because I happened to live in the building and was able to connect those folks to the services. The other thing is that City Apartments then began all the construction. And every single day after the first week that they took over the building, they tried to enter our units for whatever reason. We want to check this. We want to check that. And they also did all the repairs. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alexander. After the next speaker, Ted Hexler, Jeff Juro, Paula Gonzalez.
Good afternoon. My name is Ted Hexter. And I'd like to thank Mr. Daly and also for, and also I'd like to thank City Stop and San Francisco Tenants Union for helping empower tenants. I was fortunate to be already aware of the problems of City Apartments when my building was bought last year. And when they bought it, they predictably sent in, gave us a package that said, "Sign this," and here's a 1099. I mean, I don't understand why a tenant would want to have a, would have a 1099. And then there was a change in terms. Fortunately, I was already aware that I shouldn't sign anything, so I didn't respond. And I, the only reason why I haven't been bothered was because I wrote them a letter telling them not to call me. But a lot of times, there has been construction. We've never been notified of anything that's going on in our building. There's still, there's still, over a year later, there's still one or two apartments that, or there's two or three apartments that have some kind of construction going on. They have sent me several invoices that says, "Notice of Delinquency." And what that delinquency refers to was that if I pay, according to my lease, if I pay after a certain period of time, I'm supposed to pay the lease, I may pay that fee. But my checks have always been sent on time, usually five to 10 days before the next month. And right now, they're telling me I owe them $900. And that, I think, can really freak a lot of people out. And I'm really concerned about people that are put in that position. And it does bother me because I am somebody who has AIDS and I'm worried that if I get in a lot of stress, that my health would decline. I've been far fortunate with my health.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker, please. And then, that's all the speaker cards I have. So anyone else that wants to speak, you can come on up and line up on your left.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Jeff Juro and I'm a manager of several City Apartments properties. I wish I was being paid to speak here today. I'm not. I'm under no obligation to come. My supervisors didn't order me to come. And I won't earn a penny less if I weren't here. I'm proud to wear this t-shirt right now. I'm proud that we were awarded the best property management company in 2007 by the San Francisco Apartment Association. And I'm generally proud of what our company has done. You've seen many speakers speaking against City Apartments today. What you may not have seen is that there are three overflow rooms full of City Apartments employees, vendors, tenants, people that used to be tenants. You've seen a few of them speak today. Unfortunately, we don't come down here on a regular basis and we weren't able to grab the cards fast enough. We're not necessarily familiar with the process. I am the last speaker, as you can see.
Well, everyone who wishes to speak has the opportunity to speak, sir.
Without cards?
My mistake. We're not perfect. We certainly strive for perfection, but nobody's perfect. We have our version of the potholes problem that the city's facing right now. And we have a tenant relations department entirely devoted to dealing with these issues. As our company attorney spoke, we're going to follow up on everything that you've heard today. And I encourage each of you, if you're truly interested in getting to the heart of the matter, to come see us. Come speak with us. Come to our corporate office. Come to our buildings. Take a tour. I challenge you to find a better-looking building on any block than a City Apartments building. You've heard today about construction, constant construction, constant construction, also known as improvements. We restore buildings to beautiful period of detail. And we make constant investments in our units. We even bring housing back to the market. Units that have been vacant for years, in some cases, in some of these buildings, we refurbish them, bring them back to market. I've heard allegations that we overcharge, we charge above-market rent. Impossible. The definition of market rent is two people getting together and determining a price. We can't overcharge. We wouldn't rent our units. As far as the monopoly allegations, I think we own maybe 1% of the city's housing stock. Hardly a monopoly. In summary, we do care for the tenants and we want to hear everyone's complaint, but we'd like to hear them in a constructive manner. And we're happy to discuss this further with each of you, if you'd like to, at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. And again, if there's anyone in an overflow room who wishes to speak, you can come on in right now and line up on the left side of the committee room. Everyone will get a chance to speak today. Yes, sir?
My name is Shane Teis. I live at 1547 Clay. I have here NOVs from different city agencies that City Apartments has received since they took over my building a couple of years ago. NOVs from DBI because City Apartments didn't have the permits to do the work they were doing. NOVs from the Housing Inspector because City Apartments will not do maintenance for tenants. But there are two NOVs here that speak to a difficult time in my life. One from the Department of Public Health and one from the lead abatement. I'm a parent and I have two children. City Apartments chose to ignore San Francisco lead paint laws and expose my children to toxic materials. For this, they were cited by lead abatement and the Department of Public Health. When the inspectors informed us of City Apartments' criminal actions, we were absolutely horrified. While we waited for the results for the children's blood test, tests that the health inspector said were imperative after City Apartments' hurtful disregard for the health, safety, and future of our children, we were so completely unhygienic, I have never been more worried in my life. Some of the side effects of lead exposure in children are nervous system and kidney damage, learning disabilities, attention deficit disorder, decreased intelligence, speech, language, and behavior problems, poor muscle coordination, decreased muscle and bone growth, hearing damage, seizures, coma, and death. The inspectors had City Apartments test our units for lead safety. City Apartments informed us we would have to be temporarily relocated because our units were found to be unsafe. That's the exact words used by City Apartments in their letter, "unsafe." The place we lived with our children was unsafe. The inspectors had City Apartments clean the occupied units of the toxic materials a process which includes the use of a HEPA vac, a vacuum used to clean pretty nasty stuff. There are two articles which ran in the San Francisco Chronicle in 1999 citing City Apartments as repeat San Francisco lead paint law violators. Specifically, these articles mention the name Frank Lemby, the name that the health inspector uses on his NOV, the name that's written on our deed to our building. Ninety-nine, Frank Lemby is known as a repeat San Francisco lead paint law violator. Two thousand and six, Frank Lemby cited again for violating those laws in my building. The health of how many people has been jeopardized in these seven years by Frank Lemby and City Apartments? And where is the city's response? Why are they allowed to get away with this? If City Apartments is repeatedly violating lead paint law, then they are intentionally hurting people. And since they have been cited and fined in the past, they are aware of these laws. They are not bothered by the fines and they are making the decision to go in these buildings and ignore these laws. Can I speak to one more thing?
If you could wrap up.
Yeah. This is a printout from their website about my building, City Apartments' website. It says ours is the first environmentally friendly green building in the city. It says our building is green because it was cleaned with a HEPA vac. They neglect to state in their ludicrous misrepresentation of themselves that they were forced to clean the building with a HEPA vac by city inspectors because they were intentionally poisoning the tenants. I was there when the lead inspector told them the whole neighborhood's being contaminated by the way they were doing their work. They're not, this page is so disturbing and disgusting because they take their crime of poisoning my children and disingenuously try to make themselves out to be good guys. They're criminals.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Rodriguez and I'm an employee from City Apartments, but I'm also a tenant. And I'm a tenant at 215 Guerrero. I've been there since 2001. And we've been through several different owners. And last year, City Apartments bought my building. And we've been getting things done. They remodeled the stairs that were falling apart. They're painted the inside and outside the apartment. All our needs are being taken care of. And I'm very proud to be wearing this shirt right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Salerno. I'm the Director of Rental Services. And I'm also a building manager of four buildings in the City Apartments portfolio. I'm here today because I am proud to be a member of City Apartments. We all take, from what I've seen, incredible care of our buildings, the neighborhoods the buildings are located in, and most especially our tenants. The building that I personally live in was relatively rundown when I first started managing it. Since then, we've gone ahead and made major improvements. New carpet, new paint in the common area, new exterior paint. And I personally can attest to how well I take care of my residents. And I think that that's pretty pervasive across the portfolio with our managers. We are a hardworking company that is comprised of dedicated people who are committed to raising the standards of San Francisco housing and taking excellent care of our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to comment? You can submit that if you want, ma'am, but everyone gets to speak one time. Singing on, if there's no other members of the public, then that'll conclude. Public comment.
Public comment is closed.
If I could.
Supervisor.
Madam Chair, this has certainly been a powerful hearing. And first, let me address my first remarks to legal counsel for City Apartments and just a couple of your points, ma'am. Regarding additional property tax to the city, if and when our assessor's office gets around to reassessing and our treasure tax collector collects the property tax from any one of your entities. And then to the point of any charitable contributions that the companies have made, you know, thank you for anything that you've done and the positive to the city. But, you know, I want to talk to you about one of the realities here of running a local government. Clearly, we have revenues into the city. And, you know, we're concerned about revenues, but we also have expenditures. One of the things that I've done since coming to the Board of Supervisors in the last seven and a half years, representing basically the central city in downtown San Francisco, is attempted to push the city to do more around creating affordable housing opportunities. Part of it is to attempt to protect existing rental housing stock, which exists as the most significant portion of San Francisco's housing stock. And if you can call rent control what's a regulation, you know, rent-controlled units are primarily what San Franciscans who are of average means are able to afford and live in. Majority of our housing is rental. And the overwhelming majority of that is under the jurisdiction of the San Francisco Rent Board and Rent and Stabilization Ordinance. With that said, when we have movement or change in our neighborhoods, and things are always changing, but when we have change in the direction where large numbers of San Franciscans are being displaced, whether that be through potentially or allegedly a business practice pursued by your employer, or whether that be through folks getting evicted and moving on through condo conversions or any one of a number of things, there is fallout. And there is a price tag that's indirect, but there's a price tag that's very real where the city starts to incur expenses or weight on the expenditure side of the city budget. In other words, there are tenant legal defense programs. There are rent assistance programs. There are social services through the Department of Human Services here in San Francisco. And then there is our affordable housing budget, which is in the, not quite hundreds of millions, but tens, high tens of millions of dollars every year. And with that said, we still don't meet the need that exists. So while it may be true that there is an increase on, you know, our books on the revenue side, believe me when I tell you, it does not compare or even come close to covering what the weight or the addition of the expense on the expenditure side in terms of the city budget is. I also want to address a handful of tenants who appeared, who have had good experiences with city housing and say that that's good. It's good to hear from folks who've had a good experience that that should be the norm. And that should be such the overwhelming norm that, you know, when we hear complaints from folks who have, you know, the same landlord, that we want to hear those complaints few, few times, and we want to hear them far between. And I think that what we have here is we have a relatively unprecedented situation where there is a critical mass of tenants at City Apartments buildings who have similar stories, similar experiences. And this is a significant problem. And one, and the steward is here, and I know that City Attorney Dennis Herrera is probably monitoring these hearings. This city needs to take this matter in the most grave, in the most serious way. Because ultimately, colleagues, this matter is really about the diversity of the city, the soul of the city. And in our rent ordinance, which was set up a long time before any of us here on the Board of Supervisors got here back in the late 70s when Dianne Feinstein was mayor. But our rent ordinance, which we amend to attempt to strengthen periodically, exists so that everyday San Franciscans can continue to live here and so that hopefully folks can come to the city and make a way of it and, you know, not be millionaires and not have tons of money and still be able to make it in the city and county of San Francisco. So just on probably six or seven different levels, this case has caught my attention. Colleagues, I think that I'm going to ask this committee to continue this hearing to the call of the chair. Want to have some conversations with the city attorney's office about if and when it may be appropriate to have a closed session. Not, you know, everyone can come and give public comment before we go in closed session, but then we'd have to clear the room out to have some private conversations because of legal sensitivities in terms of the city's position. But potentially, if the city attorney thinks that that might be helpful for members of this board to confidentially be apprised of the status of the city's case against City Apartments. I think that I certainly would be interested in that beyond just personal conversations between me and City Attorney Herrera. And I think that somehow we need to figure out how to keep residents of San Francisco in their homes. Obviously, the issue of buyouts is one of the biggest issues that was raised today. I had an effort, half of which survived in court, around preventing eviction threats, which I think probably doesn't go far enough to remedy the situation that's happening, or at least that we've heard from tenants express that is happening in City Apartments buildings. So if possible, and the steward I'm going to be wanting to work with some deputies to see if... deputies to see if there is legislation, perhaps modeled on what New York is trying to do, perhaps something a little bit different to try and give tenants, whether they be City Apartments tenants or any other tenants who are under the, who are under the situation of receiving multiple unwanted buyout offers, some sort of relief or some sort of remedy. And so, colleagues, thank you for your indulgence. Thank you to everyone on both sides who came out to testify at this hearing today. I felt personally that was very meaningful.
Supervisor Pesky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Supervisor Daley for calling the hearing. And let me concur that while certainly we heard today from individuals who had good experiences, I know what my experience has been over the course of the now almost eight years that I've served as a member of the board. There are other very large landlords in San Francisco. I don't recall ever having gotten a complaint about Trinity Properties, from a tenant of Trinity Properties. They own 6,000 units. As I said earlier, not a week or 10 or 14 days goes by without me getting an email. And there's, if I'm getting one, it means the Rent Board has gotten one. It means, you know, Department of Building Inspection has gotten one or two because it often doesn't occur to a tenant, you know, to call their supervisor. You know, we're the law-making branch of government. We're not exactly, you know, the folks who make sure that the cracks in the ceiling are fixed. But nonetheless, I have, particularly over the last three years, gotten a slew of them. And so, my experience is that, hearing from my constituents, many of whom have been affected in District Three, is that City Apartments has not behaved in a way that is the appropriate way, I think, for a landlord to conduct business. And I do have to say this as a matter of personal experience. This is years ago. This is actually before I was a supervisor in the late 1990s. I had personal experience with the owners of Skyline Realty over a piece of property on the corner of Grant and Vallejo down the street from where I live, where they were repeatedly cited with notices of violation from the Department of Building Inspection for doing work without a permit on the rectory of the St. Francis of Assisi. So, I know that as a matter of my own personal experience. That is not a very good thing when you are a corporate citizen in a society in the city and county of San Francisco to be, you know, operating without permits. So, I don't, you know, obviously, the city attorney and investigators for the city attorney are looking at the facts in this case and whether or not indeed there's been work done without permits. But it's not an acceptable way to conduct oneself. I would be more than happy to entertain this item in closed session to figure out an appropriate litigation strategy. But short of that, particularly in a changing marketplace, I'm hopeful that the City Apartment family will reassess their business practices and hopefully we will receive less complaints and you all will have a better quality of life.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you. And I too would like to meet in closed session. And I think, you know, if we've got it wrong, and if all these people are wrong, I guess they were wrong in New York and Los Angeles as well. And maybe you have a bigger PR problem than you think, if that's what it is. Because for us sitting here, you know, we're listening to people. And as has been stated, the majority of people have not been happy. And again, in Los Angeles and New York, there is that possibility as well. And I think we're trying to look at this not emotionally, but in a logical manner. And that's why we have our Law Department looking at it, because that's a logical way that we can go forward with this and really have things based on facts. And that's what we're...